My microphone on. I'm calling this zoning board of appeals meeting this May 15th, is it today? Yes. Twenty twenty five to order. Bobby, would you please call the roll?
Karen Berger.
Present.
Nicole Kopick.
Here.
Raphael Katz. Linda Thomas. Joe Sarkozy.
Present.
Charlotte Berry.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 17th, 2025?
A motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, it's now my time. For those of you that have never been before this board, I'd like to explain that this is what is called a quasi judicial hearing, meaning very shortly you will be sworn in by Bobby and under oath because everything that you say in this meeting is recorded, just like a courtroom. I ask, please, when you come to the microphone, that you pull the microphone down so that you're talking into it because it's very difficult for the transcribers to transcribe it, it's difficult for us to hear. When your item is called, you will come to that microphone there, you will state your name in full, your first and last name, spell your last name, and state your address. After that, Scott Reali will read into the record the report from the city, and then you present your case. This is also a public hearing, you can have people come up for or against your petition, and you have the opportunity for a rebuttal. At this time, I would introduce at the end is Scott Reali, which most of you petitioners here have met Scott before. At my far left is, excuse me, is James Sanders, who is our attorney for the board that makes sure we don't do anything wrong. And the two people to my right, myself, and the three people to the left, we are all Pompano citizens and we serve without compensation. At this time, I would ask anybody that want, is going to speak, or even thinks they're going to speak, please stand and raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda, 25150004, has been a request to postpone, is that correct, Scott?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I believe the attorneys here, just to make a brief...
Only brief. We'll get to hear you more next time.
Yes, ma'am, Rod Finer, 1404 South Andrews Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I'm only here because it's the second time. We were supposed to submit something and supplement the staff report, and my client is, operates a bunch of food trucks in between Formula One, Ultra, and everything else, there just wasn't sufficient time to do that, so we humbly ask for a second continuance, it won't, there won't be a third, we're well aware of the board's policies.
Okay, and so this will be postponed to our next meeting in June, and what date would that be?
That is June 18th, which is a Wednesday, I wanna, because June 19th is Juneteenth.
It's Juneteenth, right.
I would've missed that.
Sir, could you just spell your last name for me, please?
I'm so sorry, F is in Frank, E I N is in Nancy, E R.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I have a motion to postpone this to the June 18th?
A motion.
Board of Appeals meeting.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item postponed, see you on the 18th of June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is a variance from Catherine Tecorkin. Did I say that right?
Corian.
Okay. Item number 24000014, please state your name, first and last.
Yes, my name is Paula West, first name is P A O L A, last name W E S T, Lynn West.
Your address?
Address 10152 Indian Town Road, Unit 159 Jupiter, Florida.
Thank you, Paula. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Scott Reali with Development Services. I just wanna preface this by saying that two days ago, City Commission made some text changes that will probably result in at least one of these being no longer applicable or necessary. There's three requests associated with this. I will read them, I will read the staff report, and then we'll let the applicant decide which, which...
I can't.
They do or do not want. The applicant landowner is requesting variances from the following provisions, Section 155 4302 B2H, to allow canopy structure and outdoor bar to be located within the property's rear yard setback, abutting a waterway rather than providing a minimum 15-foot setback as required by code. The second request, Section 155 4303NN3B, was to allow canopy structure and an outdoor bar to be located along the property's interior side lot line rather than providing a minimum five-foot setback as required by code. And the third request that was originally there, and I believe can be stricken, but I will let the applicant make that determination, Section 155 5302D5A, to allow an eight-foot-high canopy structure with a rear yard corner tri, within the rear yard corner triangle rather than adhering to the three-foot-high limit or relocating the structure outside of the site visibility triangle as required by code. The property is located on the west side of Southeast 18th Avenue between Southeast Fifth Court and Southeast Sixth Street in the Cypress Cove subdivision. The subject property was originally developed in 1968 under Building Permit 686143 with a single-family dwelling setback 25 feet from the rear lot line, which is the waterway. In 2001, in addition to the principal structure, was approved under Building Permit 014386, which permitted a reduced setback of 15 feet from the rear lot line. In 2019, the applicant installed a canopy shade structure and bar without the required permits in a location that does not comply with setback regulations. The applicant asserts that the contractors who installed the canopy structure and bar assured her that permits were not necessary. In 2024, in unrelated inspection, the unpermitted structures were identified and a code enforcement case was subsequently opened, that's 24-09005188. The applicant has since submitted an after-the-fact building permit, which is 243786. However, the zoning reviewer rejected the permit as setback relief would be necessary to allow the canopy and bar to remain in their current location. The applicant argues that due to the existing swimming pool and the 15-foot rear setback of the dwelling, it would be nearly impossible to relocate the accessory structures elsewhere in the rear yard. Again, it is worth noting that text amendments were passed at Tuesday's commission meeting, effectively eliminating the rear yard corner triangle provision, which prohibits obstructions greater than three feet in height. The proposed amendment also addresses roof overhangs stating that, excuse me, the approved amendment addresses roof overhangs stating that they may not be closer than one foot to any side or rear lot line unless it's to a waterway or canal, in which case the overhang may extend to the, all the way to the rear property line. The canopy shade structure, however, appears to be located directly along the rear waterfront and interior side lot lines, so a zero-foot setback. There are eight variance review standards, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence sufficient to meet those review standards, staff recommends the following conditions be included in the order. One, the applicant must obtain all necessary permits and approvals, including building and zoning compliance permits. Two, the applicant must address and resolve all violations related to Code Case 24-09005188. Three, setback relief is strictly limited to the canopy bar area shown in the plan submitted with this application, any encroachments by other accessory structures are prohibited. And the fourth recommended staff condition, canopies and post columns must not be installed on top of a seawall. That concludes staff's report, and I'd just like to say we do have with us tonight Mario Sotolongo from our code enforcement team.
Mario?
If he has any question, if you have any questions about the...
Okay, if I have any que, but I do it first. Mario, I just make it simple. If this petition is granted, will that help your code enforcement complaint?
Good evening, Mario Sotolongo, City of Pompano Beach Code Compliance Department. It will open the door to permits.
Yes.
By way of the permits, our violation will be cured.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paula?
Thank you, again Paula West for the record. I just wanted to add that we are in permitting right now. All of the disciplines have approved the permit except zoning for this very request. Unless you want me to go through the whole presentation all over again, I can just touch on a few little reminders to kind of go back to the presentation.
Yeah, because one of them will be basically withdrawn, is that correct?
One of them is, yes. It's one, there's three requests, two remain, one, one goes away.
Okay. And for the records that you say it, which request is being withdrawn?
The request that pertains to the site visibility triangle.
Okay, thank you.
So, I do, I do have, this is exactly the same presentation that I made previously. This is the image that I showed what, previously depicting our requests, which were the side setback, the rear setback, and the site visibility triangle. The new request now is only for the setbacks. And actually, this is not as accurate because the setbacks have been relaxed, am I correct, Scott?
That is, that's correct, yes.
So, now it's three feet from the rear and one from the side. One foot from the side.
Correct, yes, and overhang can be as close as one foot to the interior side, and it could go all the way to the rear lot line, which is the waterfront. If there's posts or columns, still three feet.
So, if I'm understanding what you're saying, since the code has been adjusted, it's not 15 feet now, it's lower than that?
It's three.
It's, it's three for this, this type of, this kind of fault, even though it's not a tiki cheeky, it's, it kind of goes...
Okay.
Part of it, so...
Okay, go ahead, Paula. Hit the highlight.
Can I ask one question? So, since it is, it's still, it's allowed then? I thought it was just for the tiki or cheeky.
If it's a, if it's a similar structure and use, like, like a covered outdoor kitchen type of thing, that, that's how zoning would, would treat it as such?
Gazebos.
Gazebos, yeah.
Go hit the highlights, Paula.
Okay, thank you. So, just a couple things as a reminder, the existing, as Scott mentioned, the existing location of the pool, as you can see, and the addition to the house on the northwest corner, does give us quite the hardship to put anything on our backyard.
Ms. West? Madam Chair?
Yes.
One of the things I think that we do unfortunately have some new members who may never have heard this application, at least two, yeah, but at least two of them, they're not, so...
So, then you would want Paula to do a fuller, I'm sorry.
That's why I was doing it.
The same people were here.
Yeah, thank you.
We do want to incorporate the last presentation into this hearing, yeah, I just wanted to touch on the main ones. I will skip over the ones that are pertaining to the Harmony and the things with the comprehensive plan, those are kind of standard, all in my narrative.
Ms. West, I was, what I was suggesting is that you do a full presentation because there are two board members who have not heard this, and so to give them feel for your project, I think it might be advantageous to do it that way.
Sounds good. All right, so I'll start from the beginning. This is the address of the property, 551 Southeast 18th Avenue. If you do have any particular questions, I do have both owners here, present for the meeting. So, again, the property is abutting the water, surrounded by single-family neighborhoods, and like I said, the, the variance requests are now reduced to what you're seeing in front of you with a lesser setback request. So, the two items that are being requested for this variance is a covered awning, which you can kind of see the, the top image, and there's a bar underneath it. It is not an outdoor kitchen, there's no mechanical equipment, it's not a sink, it's just a bar. So, these two items, the owners purchased the property, I believe in 2019, I have it all in my narrative. Of course, we all know COVID came, they hired two contractors to pull permits for the canopy and for the bar, both contractors said that no permits were required, and actually, I think I have an image here where they actually wrote "no permit" on the invoice. They assured that there were no permits required, they went ahead, did the work, one of the contractors actually passed away, and then, of course, COVID came, they were in New Jersey, they were in lockdown, they couldn't even come down here to oversee everything that was happening permit-wise, and so there presents another hardship. They actually have lost several family members during this pretty difficult time. Again, so I'll go back to the, the issue with the, the pool and the addition. So, therein lies our issue. So, the area that's circled is the area that is requesting the variance. This area, this is the only area that they could really fit any place to enjoy their backyard and the waterway. There is no other place in the backyard to put this. So, the proposed canopy is open air, it is a vinyl material, so it's not a hard roof, that's another thing. Open air also allows some views through the, the canopy area. And then, no permitting, not permit, sorry, not permitting the existing structure is actually going to bring up incurring unreasonable costs to the, the property owner that were not anticipated nor brought on themselves. And this also further restricts their use of their backyard, as I mentioned before. This is an outdoor amenity, obviously, they're in South Florida, shade is a necessity out here, especially on the water. The structures do not cause a nuisance for the waterway views, you can't see them from the street. In fact, the only part, and this is something that I mentioned at my last presentation, the only property owner that is affected is the property owner to the north, who, as part of my backup I mentioned, has entered into an agreement with this property owner, if you want to make that as a condition. The agreement basically says that they have to take down the, the structure, I actually have the agreement here. It says, "I hereby agree to remove the canopy and bar structure upon my property being sold or transferred unless otherwise agreed upon in writing with the owner of the adjoining property." So, that would be to the north. So, this is actually executed, it's notarized, and it's ready to be recorded if that is a condition. It was something that was brought up at the commission meeting when the text amendment went through, but that was not made a requirement for the text amendment. And the bar is not an out-of-character accessory structure with general single-family properties, obviously not ones in the waterway, and it would not look any more privileged to the naked eye. So, this is obviously the minimum necessary variance that we're requesting, it is an existing structure, we're not expanding it, we're not adding to it. And then this, these are just the, the general purposes and intents that we feel our request is inconsistent with. And of course, it wouldn't cause an adverse effect, the, the neighborhood, as it's already been there since 2019, nothing's come up since, it's actually being permitted, so it's going to be even more safe, and it's going to be inspected, and as I mentioned, the neighbor to the north does not object to the structure. And these are just policies that we're consistent with in the comprehensive plan. That really basically summarizes my request. I'll go back to the image. Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, does the board have any questions, Paula? Is there anyone in the audience that is for this variance? Is there anyone here opposed to this variance? Public hearing closed. No comment from the board, may I have a motion?
Microphone on, please.
Yeah, just did, sorry. So, the two requests are that the bar and the canopy, those are the two?
Yeah, the request is to allow it to be, the canopy structure and the bar located, it's, we can't really call it a rear yard corner triangle anymore, but it's, it's, it's the, it's the location of the columns that necessitate the, the variance to, to remain because other, what happened on Tuesday, I mean, it still, it still says you need to be setback three feet from the side or the rear. These, these structures appear to be a little bit closer to that. Overhangs are exempt, of course, up to one foot from the, from the side, can go all the way to the water in the, in the rear. So, I believe that's why we're keeping item number one, and then, and item number two as well. The, the third is just the corner triangle provision is, is no longer a thing.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Would we want to, or would the staff consider adding the condition that the structure be removed upon sale of the property, as was just mentioned with the agreement from the neighbor?
If, we, we could, we could do that, I think it was, if they, I think they'll, yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
If I may, we actually brought the, the affidavit because of the request being in the site visibility triangle. Now, if the site visibility triangle is no longer a requirement of the city, then I really don't see the, the need to do this affidavit. I don't know if James can add to that, but...
I was just asking.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. I, I would agree that not having that document since, number one, it's not a requirement under the code, and then, number two, you are granting a variance which will run with the property.
Any other board questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. So, in the P&amp;Z case, 24-11000014, I'm, I move we find there is competent substantial evidence in this record that all requirements for granting the variance have been met, and that we grant the variance subject to, what, three conditions? Eight conditions? No, three.
Four.
Four. I wasn't sure if it was three or four, so, four conditions requested by the staff.
Second.
And that's for item number one, we have to vote on these separately.
Okay.
The other eight? Is there another code, or she used the same?
Well, I think that's where I got the eight from.
Oh, okay, all right, so...
Bobby, would you call the roll, please?
Nicole Kopick.
Yes.
Joe Sarkozy.
Yes.
Aaron Berger.
Yes.
Raphael Katz.
Yes.
Linda Thomas.
Yes.
Charlotte Berry.
Yes. Okay, now we need a motion on the second one. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, so, and so, in the P&amp;Z case, 24-11000014, I move we find there is competent substantial evidence in the record that all the requirements for granting the variance have been met, and that we grant the variance subject to the eight?
Four.
Or, oh, four, I'm so confused, four conditions requested by the staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? Bobby, call the roll, please.
Nicole Kopick.
Yes.
Joe Sarkozy.
Yes.
Karen Berger.
Yes.
Raphael Katz.
Yes.
Linda Thomas.
Yes.
Charlotte Berry.
Yes.
Thank you, God bless.
It's been granted, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I added them all up and I said eight, I probably should've kept my mouth shut. Item number three, P&amp;Z case number 2511000007, a variance by Brian Thanos. And please talk into the microphone, state your name, spell your last name, and your address.
Hi, my name is Brian Thanos, my address is 2648 Northeast 15th Terrace, and I am requesting a variance to...
That's all I need. Mr. Reali?
I have a flash drive in which I have some images I want to...
Yeah, after Mr. Reali is... Yeah, after Mr. Realy is finished.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant landowner is requesting a variance from Section 1554302B2G, which are the prohibited location of accessory uses and structures of the Pompano Beach zoning code to allow mini-split AC units to be located in front of a principal structure rather than within an interior side or rear yard as required by code. The property is located in the Crest Haven neighborhood at the southeast corner of the intersection of Northeast 15th Terrace and Northeast 26th Court. The subject property was developed with a single-family residence in the late 1950s when it was under the jurisdiction of unincorporated Broward County. In 2000, it was incorporated into the city of Pompano Beach through the Crest Haven annexation. As is common with many corner lots in Crest Haven, the principal dwelling is oriented at a 45-degree angle to the adjacent rights-of-way. This irregular configuration can create development challenges, particularly with respect to the code-compliant placement of mechanical equipment. To address this, the applicant is requesting a variance to install air-conditioning mini-split units along the front-facing facade of the home under Building Permit 250732. According to the applicant's narrative, this location offers the most viable and practical solution in terms of energy efficiency and operational functionality. Relocating the units to the side or the rear of the property would increase noise impacts on adjacent neighbors, and furthermore, the front facade is heavily landscaped, as shown in the submitted photos, making the equipment unlikely to be visible from the street. Staff finds the requested variance to be justified, and the proposed location of the ACA units appears to be the most appropriate option, minimizing potential impacts on neighboring properties and maintaining compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. There are eight variance review standards, the applicant has addressed each of these in his written narrative, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent and substantial evidence demonstrating compliance with those eight variance review criteria, staff recommends the following conditions be incorporated into the board's order of approval. One, the applicant shall obtain all required permits and approvals, including but not limited to buildings and zoning compliance permits prior to installation. Two, the variance approval is limited solely to the installation of the mini-split units in the location depicted on the plan submitted with this application and Building Permit 250732. Any relocation or modification of the units, or the addition of other mechanical equipment or structural projections along the front facade shall require review, separate review and approval by the city. And the third recommended staff condition, existing landscaping in front of the units shall be preserved. If any of the landscaping is removed or damaged, it shall be replaced with the equivalent or enhanced screening to minimize visibility from the right-of-way. And of course, all screenings shall comply with the requirements of Section 1555301A mechanical equipment screening standards. That concludes staff's report, and I'm available for questions.
Mr. Thanos, it's your turn.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to start by saying, when I first purchased this home, it had AC, just window units, which were like a complete eyesore, so I wanted to replace those with something that'd be more efficient and more aesthetic. I wanted to put in central air, as most people have in their homes, but I was unable to do so because there was no attic access, so it was essentially impossible to run ducting. So my only other option was to run AC mini-split units. And there's three bedrooms in the house, so each bedroom has its own AC mini-split unit, and then there is a mini-split unit that cools the common area, and this is the one that I'm requesting the variance for. So, the one that is cooling the common area, the outdoor portion of the unit is affixed to the front of the property, but it's completely concealed by the hedge, I have a picture of it on the screen, and it's very difficult to even notice that it's there. And I do think that the statute that I'm requesting the variance for, that states that you can't have AC equipment in front of the house, I do think it's well-intentioned. I think like the mindset when the statute was being created was for people that might put like a giant, like four-ton AC unit right in front of their home, and it would be a huge eyesore, I would agree with that. Like, I agree with the intention and the spirit of the statute, but I don't think they were considering my specific situation where you have a very small unit that's completely concealed behind a hedge. So, that's where the unit currently is, and I guess where I would have to relocate it, if I'm not granted the variance, where I would have to relocate it is to the side of the property where there's already two other AC mini-split units, as well as a lot of other electrical equipment. I'll bring this up here. So, this is where I'd have to relocate it, and it would be close to impossible to even find a comfortable space for it, it would be a lot of crowding of electrical equipment in one space, it would also greatly increase the amount of noise, and, oh, I don't know.
You have just been disconnected.
I guess so.
You're coming back.
We're back.
Ms. Berry?
Can we proceed?
No, Madam Chair, can we go to recess?
Yes, I can. Well, we'll recess until they reset our computers, I'm sorry. Stand by.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good to start up.
Okay, please continue, Mr. Thanos.
Thank you. So, where I left off, currently, here's a picture of the side of the home where there's already two other AC mini-split units, as well as an electrical sub-panel that are servicing two of the bedrooms. If I were not to be granted the variance, this is where I would have to relocate that other unit where it would be extremely crowded, and it would obviously create significant hardship, it would be very costly to try to move the units. Additionally, it would be considerably less efficient, it would create overcrowded mechanical area with three units in just close proximity, it would actually be a poorer aesthetic appearance as opposed to the current concealed location, it would be reduced efficiency due to units competing for airflow in a confined space, and it would also increase noise concentration in one area affecting neighboring properties. In terms of functional considerations, the current location offers optimal efficiency for cooling the intended area of the home, and relocating would result in obviously increased installation costs for extending refrigerant lines, electrical connections, it would reduce the energy efficiency, and it would also have potential structural modifications to accommodate the new line paths. That's why I request that it be, that I be granted the variance to keep it in its current location, which, once again, can be seen right here where it's currently concealed behind this hedge.
Like I said, I can't even see it.
So, I appreciate everyone for listening to me and hope you guys consider granting the variance.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for the petition? Is there anybody in the audience that would speak against the petition? Public hearing closed, board questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one thing, there were three letters of opposition sent to us.
I have a question, is that the current picture or the one we have? Is that more what it looks like with the ficus?
This picture was taken earlier today.
Okay.
It's extremely current, yeah.
I have any arboring skills, I would just, my personal recommendation would just be, those ficus hedges tend to get bare, I don't know, the calucias seem to be more like filling, if the neighbors have a problem with it being visible, which is one of the items that you have to keep up with, I would just consider maybe putting like...
Calusia.
Calusia or something there, because those ficus hedges are gonna...
I agree with that.
...a nuisance. I live in the neighborhood, so I'm just giving my two cents, I'm not arborist, but...
Very good. Any other board questions?
The three correspondents, they don't say why, they just said they don't support it.
Exactly, and I suspect it's because they saw the word, you know, AC, mechanical equipment, and as Brian pointed out, I think that it's, there's a misnomer of what...
It's not a three-ton unit.
Many splits are not the same as UJC.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. I'm sorry, there is a code case document in the materials.
Ms. Berger, is your mic on?
Sorry about that. There is, Scott, there's like a code case document inside our materials, what was that?
For this property?
Violation or no?
Mario, was there a violation because of the code?
Yeah, here he goes.
And this will fix it?
Mario, speak.
Mario Sotolongo, City of Pompano Beach Code Compliance Department, yes, the open code case pertains to the AC unit. Should the board grant the variance, this will again open the door for permitting and curing the violation.
Thank you, Mario.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Prior to that, Madam Chair, because one of the conditions relates to the landscaping which was brought by the board member, I just want to make sure the board, when you're getting ready to approve, or should you do whatever you're gonna, steps you're gonna take, if you're gonna alter that particular condition, you want to do that before you take the vote. There's a condition.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to make sure that the, however it needs to be written, that it'll always be something there to cover the AC, of course. It's not visible.
The condition says existing landscaping in front of the unit shall be preserved, so that captures what you're talking about now.
Okay.
I was thinking about the other board member who mentioned that the ficus that's there is insufficient to cover long-term.
Guy on the bottom.
She was recommending something more substantive. Again, I was just bringing that up so that as a condition, if you wanted to modify that, you may want to go ahead and modify and get a concurrence from the applicant.
If I may, I do say that all screening requirements shall comply with Section 15555301A, so that should take care of it, that's more generic because it doesn't have to be a specific...
Doesn't have to be a, then it doesn't have to be a specific shrub.
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting that, what I was suggesting is that as the current picture indicates, it's sort of spaced, it's, at this point, it's not as covered as I think that she was suggesting. And so, I wasn't sure if the board was leaning towards certain actions as a condition by this applicant to further screen it, or if the compliance with the code would require that. I don't know what the arborists would require, or if this would continue to exist, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Would your condition, as you read it, that one of the conditions covered this, or do we have to make some, do something special?
You can do something special, but at the time of inspection, the inspectors will say, nope, this doesn't meet 1555301A, you need more, you need to screen this better, and then they would be required to provide...
So, that's covered, then?
Yeah, it's covered.
It's covered in his condition?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just not the arborist, that's why I brought it up.
Well, between you and me, I think the arborist worries about the trees, not the bushes. But I understand what you said about ficus, they're, he'll want to get rid of them anyway because they're not nice.
I agree. I mean, she, I think, was it Nicole, suggested calusia, I think it's a good alternative.
Yeah, that would be, that would be very pretty, yes. Ficus is a pain.
It's kind of like fashion.
Let's just let you know, ficus goes into your water lines.
Into your water lines, yes.
They love water, so they're little, trust me.
Yeah.
All right. Madam, I'd like to move this.
Of course, if I may.
Sorry.
Oh, Ms. Kat. The three letters we got in opposition, two of them have no address, one of them does. Where is that address in proximity to the applicant property?
I do not know. What?
I'm just curious if it's a neighbor directly in front, behind, you know, just a... Do you know the people, by the way?
I have no idea, like, I'm shocked, you said there's like three letters in opposition, I'm like, I'm shocked.
The address of, the one who put the address is located at 1596 Northeast 26 Court.
You know where that would be in relation to this property?
Offhand, but I can...
I can't pull it out. If he's on 26, what's he doing complaining about?
What was the street number?
I'm 15th Terrace, so it doesn't sound close.
What's the street number?
1596 Northeast 26 Court.
Oh, it's just, yeah, you butt right against it.
It's a street, he's behind, I'm...
Yeah.
But that's already been there, what's behind has been there. What he's looking for is a variance for the front.
That's what I was trying to get an idea, so it is behind, right, it's not in front?
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Kat?
No, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome. Ready for that motion?
To make a motion, yes. In P&amp;Z case, 25110007, I move that we find there is competent and substantial...
and substantial evidence in the records that all requirements are granted, the variance have been met, and that we grant that variance subject to the one, three conditions requested by staff.
Go ahead.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Bobby, call the roll, please.
Joe Sarkozy?
Yes.
Karen Berger?
Yes.
Nicole Kopick?
Yes.
Raphael Katz?
Yes.
Linda Thomas?
Yes.
Charlotte Berry?
Yes. Your variance has been approved, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. That's what went out. My light went out. Okay. Our next item is item number four, a variance from Aaron Centrowski, P&amp;Z 25110008. Mr. Centrowski, do you come to the podium?
Hi. It's for 1020 Lyons Park Drive.
Excuse me. Is there anybody in here by the name of Aaron Centrowski? Or I'm pronouncing it wrong. Item number four.
We called everybody.
What? What, yeah, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, what do we do with this one? Strike it? Postpone it?
No, they, they have the opportunity. This item will be postponed to the next meeting. If they fail to show at some point in time, it will be stricken.
Okay, do I have a motion to postpone this item to our meeting on June the 18th?
Motion. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, there is a person in the audience that wishes to speak on the item, is that possible?
We can't do that.
They can't speak on it unless the petitioner speaks on it, and the petitioner doesn't seem to be here.
Motion to move it to the 18th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four is postponed to June 18th. I'm very sorry that you're here to speak on this, but the person that asked for this to begin with has got to make their case before anybody else can speak on it. So it'll, that, they have now been postponed till the 18th of June for our next meeting, which is a month away. Item number five, special exception, Daniel Perez, P&amp;Z Case Number 25170002. And please pull the microphone down to you.
Good evening, my name is Flavia Perez, F-L-A-V-I-A-P-E-R-E-Z. My address is 3301 Northwest 5th Terrace.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant landowner requests special exception approval as required by Section 155-4207B1 of the Pompano Beach Zoning Code to utilize the subject property, which is zoned RM20, for an elementary school. The property is located in the Lock, Locklomen?
Locklomen.
Thank you. I haven't lived in the neighborhood. The neighborhood along the west side of Northwest 5th Terrace, between Northwest 32nd Street and Northwest 34th Street. The subject property has operated as a childcare facility since its construction in 1973 pursuant to Building Permit 735862. At the time, such uses were permitted by Wright in multifamily zoning districts. Under current zoning regulations, however, the use is now classified as a lawful special exception, as it would otherwise require approval through the special exception process. The applicant is now seeking to expand their educational operations to include an elementary school, initially serving up to 20 students. It is important to note that an elementary school is not currently permitted, a permitted use at this location. The zoning code distinguishes between childcare facilities and elementary schools. Unlike the existing daycare, the elementary school does not qualify as a lawful special exception, as was never previously approved or established at this site. Therefore, special exception approval is required. According to the applicant's narrative, the proposed elementary school is licensed through the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, that's DBPR. The narrative further states that the school would be compatible with the existing preschool use, and that the property is adequately equipped to accommodate the additional use citing substantial renovations completed in recent years. No changes to the traffic circulation or to the ingress or egress are proposed. Given the scale of the initial enrollment of up to approximately 20 students, and the compatibility with the surrounding residential and institutional uses, staff finds the proposal meets the criteria for special exception under the city's zoning code. Now, there are 13 special exception review standards. The applicant has provided written responses to each of them in her narrative, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent and substantial evidence demonstrating compliance with those 13 review standards, staff recommends the following conditions be incorporated into the board's order of approval. And there are two. One is to obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including a zoning use certificate and a business tax receipt. The applicant shall maintain all required state and local licenses for the operation of a private school. And the second recommended condition, the elementary school shall be limited to a maximum enrollment of 20 students unless otherwise approved through a future modification. Any expansion beyond the approved enrollment, hours of operation, or site configuration shall require additional review and approval. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Well, my, my thing is to open this elementary school is because some of the neighborhood, people who has been in the daycare has asked to open a child, a, a elementary school. And this will help also with some of the bad business that's also going on in the corner of Samporo and Fish Terrace. By opening a elementary school in this area, it will help the neighborhood go up a little.
I, possibility, those children that you have in daycare would want to stay there to go to elementary school?
Yeah, they do. They want to. And that's why I would like to open a daycare. That's why I would like to open a daycare.
Right, and then, according to staff...
They are maler on every song.
Okay. I know that you didn't want to talk much, but I understand from staff report, you do have the approval of the business and educational community to open a school there.
Yes.
You have all the paperwork necessary?
Yes.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that, I'm sorry, wait one second, Ms. Kat. Anyone in the audience to speak against this or for it? Public hearing closed. Ms. Kat?
How long has the daycare been there?
The daycare, I opened it back in nineteen, oh, 2019, I'm sorry.
And is it, it's a residential neighborhood?
It is.
Okay. We've got some letters of opposition, which always call my attention.
Okay.
Are those from your neighbors? Do you know who they're from?
No, I do not know.
Have you seen the letters?
No.
No, they wouldn't. Bobby, how many letters do we have? I, I've read some.
We received three emails of, of objection.
Three emails of objection?
Yes, three letters.
Well, three, two letters of opposition, one letter stated they were unable to attend, so I don't want to say that's necessarily...
My bad, I read it as, I saw, just saw a letter, you're right.
Okay, so there was two letters of opposition.
And the one is from, the address is 3201 Northwest 4th Terrace, which is apartment 44, it looks like, or unit 44.
Did you say apartment 44?
It's number 44, it just says number 44. I'm just trying to get an idea of where that is in relation to the school.
Well...
Looks like it's right next door.
Do you have an apartment building next to your house?
Across the street.
It's across the street, okay.
Saying that to traffic in narrow roads.
Sorry, may I ask why he's pausing there?
Uh, yes, the, they said it was a, it will be a lot of traffic congestion on our way to work and our way back home. It's a very small street.
I believe that if I do open that, if I do have the variant approved, it will create, it will not only create, but it will lessen the speed limit in the street, because the way they, the driver run there is crazy.
Does, does adding the school affect the speed limit?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then, I guess, the, the school itself has been operating as a daycare. What are the hours of the daycare?
Uh, from six o'clock to six, no, I'm sorry, from 6:30 to 6:00.
How many staff do you have at the daycare?
Uh, 12.
How many staff will you have when it becomes a school, if it becomes a school?
It will be the same.
Okay. What will the hours of the school be?
From 8 to 2:30.
So it'll have shorter hours. Do you have aftercare?
I do.
Will you also have a...
To 6 o'clock.
Will you also have a daycare plus the school? So I see that the school is limited to 20 students. The question I have is, is the school limited to 20 students plus the daycare students, or are you switching from daycare to school?
No, I'm not switching. I will have the whole thing. The daycare and the elementary school.
Okay.
You only have 11 parking spots.
Well, I, I have a question. When the children come to daycare, their mothers or fathers or whatever, they drop them off, they don't park there, correct?
No, no, they don't. They, they walk to school.
And when you are looking to have these 20 students at this, your school, they will be dropped off and picked up also?
Yes.
Or a bus, or...
I don't have a bus.
You don't have a bus, okay. So it would be parents dropping off and picking up at 8 o'clock in the morning, and picking them up around 3:00 in the afternoon, and then the ones that stay after would be until 6:00 at night. And she is correct, I believe they would have to put a 15 mile an hour speed limit on that street like they do for all the schools, if this variance is approved.
That will help a lot of assets, that will help.
I, I have another question, but it's for Scott. Was the city aware that it's in addition to, like, or is it, or was the city thinking was a replacement of the daycare?
No, I, I believe the daycare, I understood it as it was going to be in addition to, in addition, and that's why I, I, when we met, I said, are you, do you have the capacity? Are you gonna do a building addition? And, and Ms. Perez said that they, you know, they've, they've already made improvements to that, to the building, and have sufficient classroom space for the elementary school. So there will be more, more bodies there.
What's, what's the code for how many people are allowed? What's the capacity?
I can do parking requirements, I don't know about capacity, that's not really zoning.
I, I have a weird question-ish.
Wait, one at a time.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Kat, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. I'm trying to get, because we have pictures of the outside, I'm sorry. We have pictures of the outside, but I have no idea what it looks like on the inside. And, and how are the classrooms set up?
Uh, we have, I have classroom, one, each classroom is individual by cla, by size.
By age, you mean, or by size?
By age, I'm sorry.
Okay. And, and how many bedrooms are in this property, or how many rooms, I should say?
Oh, I have five, five rooms, five classroom, plus I also have a big open area.
And this was originally a house?
No, no.
Or was it originally?
No, it was, it was built as a daycare.
Okay.
Yeah, it was CO'd as a daycare back when it was legally permitted by Wright.
Okay. I had a picture as, as a house for some reason, I apologize.
You, okay? Did he say yes, or...
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. John, did you want to say something? Any other board members have any questions? Well, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Okay. In P&amp;Z Case 251, wait a minute, 1700002, I move, we find there is competent and substantial evidence in the records that all requirements for granting the special exception has been met, and that we grant that special exception subject to two conditions required by staff.
Second.
Second, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Bobby, please call the roll.
Who was the second motion?
You can pick me or her.
I'll do it. Linda Thomas?
No.
Nicole Kopick?
Yes.
Karen Berger?
Yes.
Raphael Katz?
No.
Joe Sarkozy?
No.
Charlotte Berry?
Yes. Unfortunately, it failed.
May I ask why?
Yeah, unfortunately, the reasoning that you're looking for, well, they've already discussed it. It's a 3-3 vote, and that's why it failed as far as numbers are concerned. Any reasoning behind that will come in the order that you receive.
Okay, but could I ask why they say no? I mean, I know, I know if they say no, but I mean, why?
Right. That, that's already, the discussion that occurred before is the substance of, of their reasoning. There are certain criteria that are required and that this board has to review, and based upon that criteria and the responses and the narrative that you have provided, this board has made a decision that it does not satisfy that criteria. And that, in essence, is the reason.
Could I appeal this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board, do you want to take a 10-minute recess, or do you want to continue on with item six and seven?
Continue. Good to go? Everybody good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Item number six, a special exception for Bel, Belcrest Property LLC, P&amp;Z 25170003. Please state your name.
Joshua Deichman, D.E.I.T.C.H.M.A.N., address 1305 Northeast 23rd Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Reale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, the applicant landowner in this case is requesting a special exception as required by Section 155-4220B1 of the Pompano Beach Zoning Code to utilize the subject property, which is zoned RM20, for a professional office. The property is located in the Avondale Harbor, excuse me, I can't pronounce these subdivisions, Avalon Harbor neighborhood, along the west side of Northeast 23rd Avenue, one block south of Northeast 14th Street, and one block east of North Federal Highway. The subject property has operated as an office building since its construction in 1973 pursuant to Building Permit 739482. At that time, office uses were permitted by Wright within multifamily zoning districts. However, with the adoption of Ordinance 93-34 in 1993, office uses were removed as a permitted use in such districts, and any new office use thereafter has required approval through the special exception process. The previous tenants allowed their business tax receipt to lapse, and the most recent BTR issued to, to a real estate office was inactivated in 2023. As a result, the office use is no longer considered a lawful non-conforming use or a lawful special exception. Therefore, re-establishing a professional office use at this location requires approval of a special exception. Given that the property was purpose-built for office use and was lawfully operated as such for several decades, staff does not object to the request. However, it should be noted that there is an active code compliance case, that's 24-09006854, for operating a business without a valid BTR. Approval of this special exception application, followed by submission of a zoning use certificate and BTR, application for a professional office, would resolve that outstanding violation. Again, there are 13 special exception review standards. Again, there are thirteen special exception review standards. The applicant has addressed each of these in detail. And should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence demonstrating compliance with the thirteen review criteria, staff recommends the following conditions be incorporated into the board's order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including the zoning compliance, excuse me, a zoning use certificate and a business tax receipt for a professional office. The approved special exception is limited to general professional office use as defined in the city's zoning code. Two, any open code compliance cases related to the subject property must be resolved to the satisfaction of the code compliance department, including unauthorized outdoor storage or display. And the third recommended staff condition, all parking spaces and site features such as landscaping, lighting, signage must be brought into compliance with applicable zoning code requirements. And any site improvements required to meet current code standards shall be completed prior to the issuance of the business tax receipt. That concludes staff's-
Thank you, Scott. Please go ahead, sir.
Hi, good morning, good evening. Thank you for hearing me. The office building has been continually used as office since it was built, as Mr. Reale said, in nineteen seventy-three. It was rezoned to RM twenty. And then, at the time of rezoning, office was a permitted use by right. And then later, that use was removed. So property probably should have been rezoned to something that was permitted to be office, but that never happened. When I purchased the property, it was being used as office. Wasn't aware of any of these issues. It was a multi-tenant office. The single tenant that had the BTR, he let his laps. The other tenant that was in there, apparently without a BTR, moved on. Then we re-tenanted the building. They went to get a BTR and were told, no, they can't. That is the code of compliance offices because the tenant tried to do the right thing. I'm in agreement with everything that Mr. Reale said, with the exception of bringing the parking and lighting and everything up to current standard. That would open up an entire can of worms if the property would be non-compliant for. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-three. The site plan of the property is not compliant at all. I mean, it's not, with setbacks, it's gonna open up a whole can of worms for barriers and islands and parking spots and other things that don't currently exist. Our intent was after the, to have this special exception approved so one, the tenant could get his BTR and can, you know, continue occupying the space and alleviate the code violation problem. But we also just completed a public records request and retained counsel to rezone the property to B-three, which all the rest of my parcels over there adjacent to the property are B-three and are commercial uses just like this. And this property should be rezoned to B-three. It should have been rezoned at the time that it was almost downzoned by the removal of the use of what it was originally constructed for. So to put a caveat on our ability to continue to use it from what it was constructed for and always built for at this time, I am not in agreement with that. And I hope that this board does not put that here because that will alleviate one code issue and immediately open the door for several more. However, at the time where we are rezoning, at that time, I think we can explore site plan changes to make things current.
Does the board have any questions at this time?
Yeah, to Scott. So if we do pass this, all the stuff that has to be, that they're saying that needs to be upgraded, whatever, that has to go, even if we pass it, it still has to go through the city, correct?
If you pass it as my conditions, as an office, yeah. That would, unless you specifically exempt that. But that, you know, the language in there sounds a little harsh, but there's what's called retroactive landscape plans. We don't expect full compliance with these older sites. We acknowledge and understand that there are certain site constraints. There's only so much you can do. The site is uniquely shaped. So with that in mind, you know, we want compliance to the maximum extent practicable on these constrained properties.
What else? Oh, sorry, as a follow-up to that, I know you just mentioned landscaping, but you also mentioned lighting, signage, et cetera. Can you maybe elaborate as to what this would be requiring him to do with regards to those?
Are you addressing Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, those would, that's, it's all just basic code requirements for, you know, provide minimum site lighting for safety and security, landscaping particularly along the perimeter of the property if it's feasible. I mean, typically in these older sites that are still functioning, we ask for a retroactive landscape plan whenever there's improvements coming in or a special exception is coming in or that type of thing. And, you know, we understand that this is not a new vacant site, but there should be some minimal upgrades to be expected.
And then can I just, as a follow-up question to the applicant, what specifically are you most concerned with with regards to that last condition?
So the Belcrest Shopping Center? If you look at the, on the application, if you look at the survey, you'll see that the boundary on the west side crosses over the entrance to Belcrest Shopping Center. There's also shared parking, cross-access, all those other issues. And because it's currently split zone, there's gotta be buffers. There's, the way that the parking is configured currently is non-compliant. Lighting, there is site lighting for the site over there. That one I'm not too concerned with. And then there is like a small monument sign that says just "Belcrest Professional Offices" on it. And I'm sure it would be in compliance given the scale of this property and the size of the sign. But the parking is the one that I'm most concerned with. And then I also don't want to open up. And I appreciate Mr. Reale's, you know, working with us, you know, to cure this and all the help from our friends and community members. But my concern is, you know, it's an old funky property. It should have been, I mean, our intent is to rezone it to B-three, do a unity of title, and then we don't have to worry about this anymore. But for the time, I'm being threatened by the code enforcement office for up to five thousand dollar a day fines because our tenant is attempting to use an office building as office and not make any changes to it. It's a pretty screwy situation, so.
Sorry, I think you said too that you're seeking a zoning change. Where are you at in that process?
Just finished the public records request, got the documents back yesterday. And that's, I mean, the outcome of this meeting is the first step. That's the second step. I retained Jeremy Shear.
I can't hear you. You're not talking to the mic.
I have to talk to the mic.
I retained a attorney named Jeremy Shear to push that process through. Already paid him the retainer and got the records request back yesterday.
As this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for this petition? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak against this position? Hearing done, public hearing closed. Do we have any letters of opposition?
No, Madam Chair.
No, okay, thank you. Are there any questions of this board? Hearing done, can I have a motion?
Motion. In P&amp;Z case twenty-five dash one-seven-zero-zero-zero-three, I move, we find there is competent substantial evidence in the record-
In the record that all the requirements for granting the special exception have been met and that we grant the special exception subject to the three conditions requested by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing done, Bobby, please call the roll.
Who seconded that motion?
Ms. Thomas.
Thomas. Karen Berger?
Yes.
Linda Thomas?
Yes.
Nicole Kopick?
Yes.
Raphael Katz?
Yes.
Joe Sarkozy?
Yes.
Charlotte Berry?
Yes. Your request has been granted.
Thank you all.
You're very welcome. Item number seven, a special exception, Race Track Petroleum, Inc., And Paula West is the agent.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Scott. I'm a zoning attorney at Greenspoon Martyr with an address of two hundred East Barrett Boulevard. I'm here with Paula West. We're the agents for the applicant.
Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. This is our last item. The applicant landowner requests special exception approval as required by Section 155, 4219H1 of the Pompano Beach Zoning Code to utilize the subject property, which is zoned B-three, for a car wash. The property is located on the north side of West Atlantic Boulevard between Northwest Twenty-eighth Avenue and Northwest Thirty, Thirtieth Avenue in the northwest CRA. The subject property is currently vacant. Previous approvals for a gas station and convenience store have expired. The applicant intends to develop the property with a thirty-five, a new thirty-five hundred square foot express car wash and related site and landscape modifications. A car wash requires special exception approval in the B-three zoning district. In two thousand nineteen, the ZBA denied a special exception application for a proposed car wash at this location. And that was P&amp;Z number nineteen dash one-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-two. This project will require site plan and building design review and will require landscaping in excess of standard code requirements in order to comply with certain policies in the city's adopted comprehensive plan. I don't have to read them in detail. Their policy oh-one-oh-four-oh-four, oh-one-oh-seven-two-one, oh-one-oh-eight-oh-three. Essentially, it says, if you're along one of our gateway streets, such as Atlantic Boulevard, you're gonna have to provide landscaping and beautification in excess of standard code requirements along the major street frontages. That's essentially what those policies say. The applicant has submitted a detailed narrative addressing all thirteen special exception review standards along with the use-specific standards for a car wash and a motor vehicle-related use. While the city's adopted transformation plan for Atlantic Boulevard discourages the expansion of new auto-oriented uses, the site is currently vacant and well-positioned for redevelopment. Supporting materials include a feasibility analysis report and a traffic study with trip generation and vehicle queuing analysis and a noise impact study referencing a comparable car wash location. Again, there are thirteen special exception review standards. And should the board determine the applicant has provided competent and substantial evidence demonstrating compliance with those review standards, staff recommends the following conditions be incorporated into the board's order of approval. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including site plan and building design development orders, a zoning use certificate and a business tax receipt for a car wash. And the second recommended condition, substantial conformance to the conceptual site plan submitted with this special exception application with superior and enhanced landscaping consistent with comprehensive plan policies oh-one-oh-four-oh-four, oh-one-oh-seven-two-one, and oh-one-oh-eight-oh-three. And that concludes staff's report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Again, my name is Matthew Scott. I'm a zoning attorney for the applicant. I'm joined tonight by Paula West, rent planner, and my client, Thomas Derry. We're also joined by our traffic engineer, Carl Peterson. And we have some other folks from Rising Tide. We're here tonight for the special exception application for the Rising Tide Car Wash. If the special exception is approved, as Scott said, we still have to go through the site planning process that goes to the Planning and Zoning Board and their Architectural Appearance Committee as well for their review. Before getting into my presentation about how we comply with the criteria for a special exception, I wanted to call up my client to give you some background on Rising Tide, what makes them unique and really what their mission is and what they're hoping to bring to Pompano Beach.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you to the zoning board for seeing me and hearing us out today. My family started Rising Tide Car Wash because my brother Andrew is on the autism spectrum, and he's actually right there. And he's a proud Pompano Beach resident. We realized when Andrew was graduating high school that in order for him to lead the full adult life that we knew he was capable of, we were gonna have to take action. We looked at a lot of different businesses, and we really liked Car Wash because we felt it really utilized his skills and the skills of many individuals with autism. It's detail and process-oriented work, and that's the stuff that Andrew excels at. So in two thousand and twelve, we decided to buy our first Car Wash in Parkland, Florida with the mission of employing Andrew and eighty percent of our staff being on the autism spectrum. And with the help of a lot of really wonderful supporters, some of whom are with us tonight, the business has been a true success story. And I want to illustrate that with a short one-minute video clip from our CNN Champions of Change segment.
Welcome to Rising Tide Car Wash.
Here, I feel like I've just been able to learn more and grow as a person and as a professional.
I want to be a manager. My new goal is to travel by saving money.
It is an accepting place. It's like a proof that people with autism can lead. You can't just, you know, judge it just by one certain aspect of autism because everybody with autism is different.
By designing systems that work really well for our team, it's allowed us to scale effectively to our three locations, washing over half a million cars a year. We've had over one hundred team members move on to all sorts of industries, hospitality, retail, to maintenance and auto body repair. Our team members are incredibly talented, but this world has not been designed for them. My hope is that they find the confidence that they can do the things they want to do in this world.
Welcome to Rising-
As the video showed, we have three locations in Parkland, Margate, and Coral Springs, Florida. And they are currently employing about ninety individuals with autism. And those jobs are really needed. And research shows that around eighty percent of individuals with autism are unemployed. That translates in the city of Pompano Beach to about nineteen hundred adults with autism that are unemployed. And we have one really important lever to pull here, and that's to get young people with autism jobs early in their careers. In fact, research shows that when we get paid employment for individuals with autism during their teenage years, they're more than twice as likely to secure long-term employment. And that's essentially what our business model is based around. So this project would create twenty-five, at least twenty-five jobs for individuals with autism from Pompano Beach, but it will also be a launchpad for many more careers. We are a deliberately developmental organization, which means that we really focus a lot on training. We're constantly training our staff, constantly coaching them, constantly giving them feedback so that they can have the skills they need to be successful with us or to move on to other jobs. And that's translated to over one hundred of our employees moving on to other jobs in the community. And you don't have to just take my word for it. We've been held up as a national model for autism employment. We've received national media attention. We've been the Autism Society of America's National Employer of the Year twice. And my book has been acclaimed by thought leaders such as Temple Grandin, Steve Silberman, Seth Godin, and Chip Heath. So what we're hoping to bring to the city of Pompano Beach is a family business, a national employment model for individuals with autism, and an aesthetically beautiful car wash. And you can see here, this is our Coral Springs location, which is very similar to what we're proposing here in the city of Pompano Beach. And from there, I'll let Matt go through the rest of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. So we wanted to give you that background on how this is a unique application that we believe addresses a community-serving need of providing the car wash service, but also a much more important purpose for the community, which is helping find jobs for Pompano Beach autistic individuals. The site that we identified makes a lot of sense for a car wash. It's on Atlantic Boulevard, west of Powerline Road. It was approved for a gas station before- approved for a gas station before. It's currently owned by Race Track, so my client has it under contract. But it's sat vacant for over 50 years. Our research suggests it might be closer to 60 or 70 years. So it's a vacant 1.2-acre site that hasn't seen any development. And so what we hear from the sellers is that it's a source of dumping, meaning people drive by the vacant site on Atlantic Boulevard, dump their trash, vagrants collect there. And so it's a bit of a problem, but more importantly, it's just been vacant for so long, right? And so it's screaming for some sort of development, and so we thought this would be a really good location. The other thing that makes it a good site is that the zoning around it is predominantly B3. In fact, right behind the site, there are some single-filmy homes that are also zoned either B2 or B3, meaning they're non-conforming in that location. To our west are restaurants. To the east, there are offices and a variety of sort of home improvement-type uses, tile stores, things like that. And so here's our site plan. As Scott mentioned, we have the obligation, as part of this project, to provide superior landscaping. And that was a requirement that I believe we met happily with the site design, because the goal is for this to be a beautiful, welcoming site for people to come. And so what you can see here are the variety and volume of trees on all sides of the project. On the bottom of your screen, that would be Atlantic Boulevard. So there's an existing platted access point that Race Track proposed. So we're going to use that platted access as the most logical point to enter the site. And then the building is configured horizontally across the site, sort of matching the site design, which is 1.2 acres, but mostly a rectangle. And so cars would pull to the back to get into queuing, go into the car wash. They would pull through and then pull out to use the vacuums. An interesting feature that I'm going to show you in a second is we also have a dog wash area. So we provide services at sort of like a big tub in the front for people to come wash their dogs. And we even have hair dryers and towels for people to use. I was surprised with this myself as a dog owner and think this would be something that I could see my wife taking our dog to. And so the idea is that this isn't just a car wash. This is a place that we're looking to employ 25 to 30 people with autism, but also a community kind of place, the kind of place where you go and you recognize the employees, where you take your dog and people say hello to you. And so we wanted to thoughtfully design it that way. I can tell you that some of the trees you see are over 20 to 30 live oaks, crepe myrtles, and other types of flowering trees, in addition to a bunch of the landscaping. The other thing I want to mention while I'm on this is that on the north side, we are proposing a six-foot wall. So there'll be landscaping on both sides and then a wall as well to create some privacy for the neighbors to the north. And this was something really cool that we spent the time, that Thomas spent the time to get, which is a flyover, a virtual tour of the site, so you can really get an idea of how it's going to look and something better than just sort of 2D or even 3D images. So this again shows the extensive landscaping, the palm trees, the buffering, and I will make sure to mention when we get to the dog wash area. The big concern from an impact perspective, as you're watching our fancy video, is queuing. Issue is, is there enough space for the cars? The old car washes that are connected to a gas station, they sometimes back up into the street. So we drastically exceed what the code calls for in the way of queuing for vehicles, meaning there is tons of space. Oh, let me stop my speak. We also made sure to check with fire and make sure there's more than enough space for a fire truck to get around, which you can see it's, you can see it working its way around the site. And so our traffic engineer is here. He can speak to this, but there is ample queuing on site to ensure that there is no scenario where there would be any sort of issue with cars backing up onto the street. And so then here again are renderings. I'll just point you to the image on the right. The area in the front there is where the dog wash would go. And then again, here are two more renderings. As the board knows, there is an obligation, a burden on the applicant, to show how we meet all of the criteria. And so just to sort of reiterate sort of our requirements and our obligations here, when it comes to a special exception, a special exception is a use type that the city has decided is permitted, that should be allowed, if we can show we comply with the criteria. And so the inquiry is whether we can present evidence and support materials that show that the use wouldn't be contrary to the public interest. That's really what these criteria are trying to get at. And so what we've done with our narrative and then the backup materials, including the need study, the traffic study, and support documents from the University of Miami's Autism Center, and then Broward County Schools showing the need for employment, is that we've worked really hard to show that we drastically exceed your criteria, that it's not even close that we meet this for this application. And so I'm going to run through some of those quickly, because I think some of them are more obvious than others. The first is consistency with the comprehensive plan. So the site has a land use designation of commercial. It's designed, the city's decided they want heavy commercial uses here, zoning as well as B3. That's an intensive zoning district that allows for a variety of intense types of uses. Some of the ways that we specifically comply with the comprehensive plan would first and foremost include infill development. So the city wants to see in their comprehensive plan 50-year-old sites that no one's doing anything with, that are sources of dumping, to be developed with a community-serving use that generates tax revenue and creates jobs for people. And so this clearly complies with that objective. Another item that the comprehensive plan calls for is pedestrian facilities and sensitivity to existing neighborhoods. And so we are providing sidewalks on the front and sides of the site, sensitivity to the neighborhood. We are including a wall on the backside with landscaping on both sides with mature trees to create that buffering. And so those are just some of the things. The other thing I would mention is that the comprehensive plan talks about discouraging crime and crime prevention strategies. So what we're proposing here is that the car wash will have hours of operation from 8:00 or 8:30 to 7:00 PM. So there will be no evening hours. I say that because permitted uses for the site could be open much, much later. A gas station, which is what this was originally designed for, could be open all hours of the night. And so those hour restrictions, we think, also are better for the neighborhood. The other thing is, as part of our site plan package, we have full crime prevention features, such as security cameras and other security features for the site. The next criteria is whether it complies with the applicable zoning district use standards, dimensional standards, things of that nature. So we meet code for height. We meet code for landscaping. We meet code for parking, purvious area, stacking and circulation. I already spoke about that, how we have way more stacking than is required by code. And then, of course, the use is permitted by special exception. And with regard to this criteria, that it avoids overburdening existing public facilities, resources, deterioration, and any adverse impacts. So as part of your backup, we have a noise study that shows that the silencers that we propose as part of our plans, that we put over the vacuums and the car wash tunnel, drastically reduce the noise to below the decibel level that the city would allow. And so we combat that potential issue, silencers that we install. With regard to water usage, the car wash, as it turns out, uses much less water than a lot of typical commercial uses. In this case, what Rising Tide does is they reclaim some of the water and they recycle it to reduce that impact. And then the other thing that's interesting that I didn't know is that a car wash use uses much less water than someone washing their car at their home. And so this creates the benefit of, by having this service in the area, people will not use their own hoses at home and waste all that water. I showed you the site plan and how much time we spent on the landscaping and overall design. We fully expect that we're going to exceed code requirements relative to landscaping, and so there's ample landscaping on all sides. The other thing I would offer is that we are preparing this architectural design so that when people drive by, that it looks special. It looks like a really nice commercial use. It's not your typical car wash that is just a box building. And so we think the architecture also helps improve this area and address any potential concerns about adverse impacts of the look of the building and the look of the site. Now, I spoke earlier about the fact that there's some dumping on this site and how it's sat vacant for 50 years. So there's this theory in community development called the broken windows theory. What it talks about is that when there's a community that has a lot of broken windows, it sends a signal to people in the area that crime happens here, that taking care of your property is something that is tolerated. And so similarly, a site sitting vacant for 50 years on Atlantic Boulevard sends a signal to the area, right, that dumping is a fine thing to do on this site, or that loitering is fine there, or that people can park their cars and hang out. And so I think on a very basic level, approving this project helps address that issue. Having a very active business owner there on a regular basis with normal hours, taking care of the site and maintaining it on a consistent basis. As I said, we have in our backup a study from BBG Real Estate Services, which is a real estate consultant that analyzes whether there is a demand for a use, right? And so my client would want to do this, even if there were not a requirement in your code, to make sure that there's the demand for this in the area. Your code calls for it because part of the considerations of whether this is contrary to the public interest is whether there's a proliferation of the use type. So as an example, I'm sure you've all seen when Walgreens and CVS are across the street from each other, right? There's clearly maybe not a demand for them to be on every corner as you drive down, and so you see them closing. It's not something that was a well-designed, thought-out development typology. And so what the demand study that we provided shows is that there are a few car washes that are at least over two miles, in most cases, three miles from our site. In addition, the population in the area, they were able to use cellphone data to see that people going to get a car wash are driving multiple miles from where they live to find a place to get their car wash. In many cases, they're driving all the way to Lauder Hill. This is Pompano Beach residents, right? And so that's some strong evidence that there's a demand here in this area for another car wash, because we don't want, I would think, as a policy matter, Pompano Beach residents leaving the city and spending their money elsewhere. It also doesn't make a ton of sense for people to drive multiple miles to get what really is a neighborhood-serving use. The other thing that the study demonstrates pretty clearly is that this area of Pompano Beach has a growing population, that there are more people moving to the area, indicating that there is substantial demand for this use. And then on a deeper level, the fact that we are proposing to employ on a continuous basis 25 to 30 autistic individuals, we have in our backup a support letter from the University of Miami, their Autism Department, that says there is a huge demand, a huge demand for jobs for people with autism. We also have this quote from Broward County Public Schools, and I believe she's here tonight, she can speak to this, that there is such a big demand for finding jobs for people with autism. I didn't know myself that the unemployment rate was 80 to 90%. I think that's a shocking figure to find that out. And based on the numbers of autistic individuals in Pompano Beach, what we're seeing is that there is close to 2,000 people, working-age people, that cannot find meaningful employment. And so we think that that's a really, really strong piece of support that demonstrates the need for this project. And so just to summarize what we did before we got here tonight. So I think it's apparent from our snazzy videos and our plans that we spent a ton of time designing this project, but what we also did was we met with community stakeholders. So we, Thomas communicates with your local high schools, because that's where he's going to be finding employees. We talked to some Pompano Beach residents that I think you might hear from tonight. We, of course, talked to the school board. We met with your commissioners, because this isn't just my client coming to the city and saying, "I want to open a business." This is, "I want to be partners with the city." And so as evidence of that, in your backup is a letter of support from the mayor of Margate, who voiced their full-throated support for this project, because we're already there and it's been such an asset for them. And so with that being said, I think we meet the criteria in your code for the special exception, and we would respectfully request approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone speaking for this petition that would like to speak? Have you been sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and...
I apologize. I've been that thing coughing in the back of the room.
Oh, okay.
My name is Margie Hedlund, H-E-D-E-L-U-N-D, 4300 Northeast 16th Avenue, Pompano Beach, 33064.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Margie Hedlund. I am with the Autism Society of Florida, and my family and I are the ones that recently got the city of Pompano Beach their autism-friendly, to be an autism-friendly city. I'm sorry, guys, getting over a bad cold. So the city of Pompano Beach is an autism-friendly city, which means we've trained all your police officers, your firefighters, your parks and rec. City of Pompano does it really good when it comes to individuals with autism, right? Our parks and rec have all these great programs and things. So when I heard Rising Tide wanted to come to Pompano, I'm like, yes, we belong together. I mean, it just works. So we're thrilled. Employing persons with autism in the city is great, but it just, it makes sense in Pompano. You guys have seen our sensory-friendly truck that we have in the Parks Direct Department, right? The city of Pompano Beach, seven days a week, has programs in our city for individuals with autism. Did you know that? Every day of the week, there's something going on? So it makes sense for us to have a business like this, right? So we're thrilled to have them. And here's the thing, when people come into our city and they go to the parks and they go to events and maybe they go to a pickleball for people with autism, then they're going to go to a restaurant. So they're bringing revenue into our city, right? And we're a loyal bunch. If I know that this is in the city and I'm coming to it, I'm going to do a few more things while I'm here, right? So we, the autism community, the Autism Society of Florida, the Parks and Rec Department, I just think it's a great fit, and we're really excited, and we hope you let them come be a part of our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for this project? Anyone against this? Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Oivin. And I work for Rising Tide Car Wash.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And your name and address, please.
Oivin Sanchez, 833 Northwest 47th Street, Pompano Beach, 33064.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Oivin, and I work at Rising Tide Car Wash. I also live here in Pompano Beach, Florida. This is my first job, and when I started, I was really nervous. And the people in the team, they were so kind to me, and they helped me get through it by telling me not to worry, that everything would be all right. And I'm really hoping you guys say yes to this petition that we're making, that we people have the same opportunity to get a job. Yeah, thank you.
And thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak for this petition?
Hello, members of the board. My name is Watson Loren.
You got, have you been sworn in? And please get closer to the mic.
I've been sworn in, yes. Excuse me.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And your name and address for the record, please.
Watson Loren. My address, 4970 Southwest Toe Street, 33068 Margate, Florida.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Watson, and I'm here to speak in support of Rising Tide's car wash proposed new location in Pompano Beach. Rising Tide's changed the course of my life. I started there in the entry-level position, and over the time, with the right support and strong team around me, I was promoted to supervisor. This experience gave me the confidence and the real-world skills I needed to take the next steps in my career. I got my first job in auto collision at Atlantic Coast Collision Center, one of Rising Tide's local referral partners. And today, I work as a collision repair technician at Auto Nation Collision Center. Even now, they continue to support me. They welcome my cannon machines at their locations, helping me grow my own small business on the side. I know what it feels like to want to contribute, to be a part of something meaningful and grow. Rising Tide's made that possible for me, and it made a lasting difference in the lives of others. This new location means more opportunity, more people finding purpose, just like I did. did, and I hope you will support it. And also, I know someone who worked at Rising Tide's. His name was Melvin. And I met him a few years back this when I left, and I, me and him were just talking. And I'm, "How Rising Tide's?" He says, "Oh, I've worked in them. I work in our movies." He said he worked at AMC Theaters. So, the good thing is this, this, this job, or this business that's being built here, will give people with autism the new skills they need to get new jobs, to interact with people. Thank you for having me here.
Anyone else in the audience that would speak for this petition?
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Wolf, W-O-L-F-E, 2703 Northeast 15th Street, Pompano Beach, 33062. Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Stacy Wolf, and I serve as a transition supervisor for Broward County Public Schools' Exceptional Student Education Department. I've had the privilege of working for Broward County Public Schools for over 26 years, serving as a teacher, an autism coach, a specialist, and now overseeing transition services and secondary programs that support more than 15,000 students with disabilities throughout the district. I'm also a proud resident of Pompano Beach for over 10 years, so I'm here tonight, both as an educator and as a neighbor who cares deeply about this community. I'm here to express my strong support for Rising Tide Car Wash, their request to open a new location here in Pompano Beach. For many of our students with autism and other developmental differences, gaining paid employment while still in school is a crucial step toward building independent, meaningful lives. Rising Tide Car Wash has been an extraordinary partner in making that vision a reality. Their workplace is far more than a car wash. It's a thoughtfully structured and supportive environment where our students are empowered to develop real-world job skills, from punctuality, teamwork, to effective communication. These experiences help them grow in confidence and capability, as you've seen here tonight. Most importantly, Rising Tide helps students see not just who they are today, but who they can become tomorrow. Rising Tide was built with neurodiverse individuals in mind. They don't just hire. They train, they coach, and they believe in each person's potential. And because of that, our students thrive there in ways they often cannot in traditional work environments. But what's even more powerful is the ripple effect. Rising Tide inspires other businesses in our community. Our job coaches, I have 80 of them employed under me, by the way, point to them as a model, a proof that inclusive hiring isn't just possible, it's good business. They help change perceptions and open new doors for our students far beyond their own company. So, tonight, I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking on behalf of the hundreds of students and families who found hope, purpose, and possibility through Rising Tide. I'm also speaking on behalf of the 550 students with disabilities right here in Pompano Beach Schools, who are matriculating through the school system and can benefit directly from this opportunity. Approving this new location is more about zoning, it's about expanding access, creating meaningful opportunities, and building a more inclusive community. It's about showing what's possible when we choose to believe in everyone's potential. Thank you for your time and for considering this important step towards Pompano Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for?
Laura Glorioso, 4735 Northwest 30th Street in Coconut Creek, G-L-O-R-I-O-S-O. Good evening. I work with individuals with autism and other disabilities for the past 20 years. I've been a job coach and a teacher at Atlantic Technical College since 2005, and I've worked with other agencies throughout Broward County. I teach employment skills and independent functioning to my students and prepare them to enter the workforce. I've worked in partnership with Rising Tide and supported them since they opened over a decade ago. I'm here this evening to share with you that Rising Tide is not just another car wash. Since their opening, I've had the privilege of working with a team that has demonstrated time and again their dedication to the success of their employees and the compassion to help those employees when compassion is really what's needed. Rising Tide has offered many of my students their first job, and some of them are here tonight. They have high standards, and the students come to class. It's, it's such a pleasure when they come to class. They're so excited, they're nervous to start their first job, and they come to class, and we work with them to get their skills ready and improve them, and we communicate with Rising Tide so that we know, they tell us what we need to work on, we help them in school, and, and they're working. And they come to school so excited, right? Even, "Oivin, Ms. G, Ms. G, you should, you know, oh, I'm going to be supervisor, right? Oh, I'm doing this, I got moved from the passenger side to the driver's side." Those, those are the best stories, right? Those are the moments that we teach. For us, it's like, whatever, you know? It's, it's like something we take for granted, and for these guys, it is, it's life-changing. It really is. They're not just another car wash, they give opportunities. They have understanding of the special learning styles that are needed to work with these guys and to teach them. They train with patience, they offer support, and they have exemplary structure built into their business model. Because of these opportunities, my students have excelled. They take pride in their work and their accomplishments. They have the confidence to speak up, to ask for opportunities, and move into positions that, when they first started, I, I have a couple in mind. They come, they're barely talking, they're very shy, they move into customer service positions, they go on TV with you, right? Because of the support that they get, right? They're not afraid to come and ask for help if there's a situation they don't understand or need help with, right? Because it's, it's so many different perspectives. I see my students develop friendships that is, you know, if they're not working, they're going to be sitting home, and now they have a community. They're, they're increasing skills. I mean, that goes without saying, hard-ends, soft-skills. And as we've seen here, they take those skills when they're confident and ready, and they move on to the next big thing for them, their aspirations. So, I just would like to say Rising Tide is not just another car wash. When you bring them into your community, you're gaining a community partner who's dedicated to inclusion and the success of their employees. And through that spirit, you're gaining a partner whose participation strengthens the community. So, I ask you to please support their, their expansion into Pompano Beach. One other note, I would just say, watching the presentation, the location is on Atlantic Boulevard, and a lot of my students, I'm sure a lot of your employees, have to use public transportation. So, this is an excellent location for them to be able to get to work. There's the frequency of that bus, it's, it's every day of the week, it's extended hours, where some of the other locations maybe don't have that. So, this is a great opportunity for those that might be transportation disadvantaged or that just don't, don't drive, right? So, thank you for your time.
I make an assumption here that all of you sitting here are for this project. So, I would like to ask if there's anybody against this project. Hearing none. Does anyone else want to speak for the project?
Good evening. My name is Juliana Escobar, 1821 Northwest First Way, Pompano Beach, Florida, 33060.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good again. Right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Juliana Escobar, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, not just as a proud resident of Pompano Beach, but as a parent of a remarkable young man with autism, an advocate and someone deeply involved in our community. I serve as a constituency board member, an outreach lead for the Center for Autism and Related Disabilities of the University of Miami and Nova, Saurista University, a member of Atlantic Technical College Advisory Council, transitioning into employment, a member of the leadership team for Accessibility Business Resource Group at JP Morgan Chase in Florida, and also a member of APSI, Association of People Supporting Employment First, also in Florida. Through each of these roles, I've seen firsthand both, the incredible potential of individuals with autism and the barriers they continue to face. That's why I'm here tonight in a strong support of bringing Rising Tide Car Wash to our city. This is not just about approving a business, it's about opening the door to meaningful employment, community empowerment, and inclusive economic growth. Rising Tide is a nationally recognized for-profit company that's already made a measurable impact in South Florida. Their locations in Parkland and Margate have created over 90 jobs, most of them filled by individuals with autism and have generated substantial revenue while revitalizing commercial areas. We have the chance to replicate the success right here in Pompano Beach. Why does that matter so much? Because right now, the unemployment rate for adults with autism in Pompano Beach is estimated to be over 80 percent. That is not just a statistic, it's a reflection of untapped talent and overlooked potential. Rising Tide is uniquely positioned to address that need in a way that is not only compassionate but economically sound. This project will bring a significant boost in local employment, particularly for those historically marginalized community. Increase sales, I'm sorry, increase sales, tax revenue, and business activity, a chance to show that Pompano Beach wants to lead the way in inclusive and forward-thinking development. Rising Tide doesn't operate on goodwill alone. They are a successful and growing business that proves purpose, and profit can go hand in hand. For families like mine, this isn't just about a job opportunity. It will be the first time they see their loved ones bringing home a paycheck, experience independence, and feel truly valued. That kind of dignity is priceless, and it also makes economic sense. Pompano Beach is ready. We have the infrastructure, the community support, and the leadership to embrace this opportunity. Approving the son-in-nated for Rising Tide is more than a planning decision, it's a statement about the kind of city we want to be. So, tonight, I respectfully ask you to say yes, yes to economic development, yes to inclusion, yes to a better future for all of Pompano Beach. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your continued commitment to building a city that leads, that lives, I'm sorry, and includes everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none, public hearing is closed. I will say one thing. We were given a letter opposed to this project, but I don't think it's really that important because this person just referred to you as a gas station. So, I would like to tell you, that letter came in to us tonight, right before the meeting, and he said that they don't want another gas station here, and since it's not a gas station, I guess that's the only letter we have, unless you have any letters.
That is the only letter of opposition, and we also have six letters of support, too.
Six letters of support.
And one of them from the CRA, which, the last time, there was a...
Yeah, the CRA was against the gas station.
And they were against the previous car wash, but they are fully supportive of this.
Fully support this one. Do the board members have any questions?
I have a quick comment I'll make, which is, I went, totally unrelated, to the one in Margate one time, not knowing, I just needed a quick car wash. And I was incredibly surprised at how meticulously clean it was, how friendly every single employee was, and what a cool concept it was. So, so, with that said...
Make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. Which is, in, is this special, major temp? Oh, special exemption, okay. So, in P and Z case number 2517000004, I move, we find there is competent substantial evidence in the record that all the requirements are granting, the special exception have been met, and that we grant that special exemption, subject to the conditions, I don't know how many, two conditions requested by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from this board? Please call the road, Bobby.
Raphael Katz.
Yes.
Karen Berger.
Yes.
Nicole Kopick.
Yes.
Linda Thomas.
Yes.
Joe Sarkusio.
It's an absolute yes.
An absolute yes.
Charlotte Berry.
Madam Chair, I would only ask there'd be one condition, and that is that the applicant provide us with a signed copy of that book I've been looking at.
Yes, yes. You mentioned a book, we would like a, I would like a coffee. Thank you, thank you.
I'll say that sometimes I sit on this board, you know, we're voting on stuff, and I really have doubts, one way or the other, am I doing the right thing? This was a no-brainer, so thanks.
Absolutely.
It's a good way to end the night, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Phenomenal speeches.
Yeah, my, my daughter goes in Houston to a place that they, she can wash her daughter. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I guess there's no further business. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank Bobby for sitting in for, what?
No, I just wanted, I wanted to make one comment to the board.
What, what, what do you want to say?
Thirty seconds or less. Anytime, and I know we have...
James, James.
Probably wait until, probably wait until they leave.
Matt, and if you could take the crowd out, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Meredith taught you well.
Yes.
Or vice versa.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I just want to make sure the board is aware, one of the sticking issues, when, and we've had this happen periodically, and there are times when items come before you, and there's not a clear indication, at least for those who have to draft the order, in the approvals, not a problem. It's the denials that become an issue, because in the denials, I need you to be very specific, pursuant to your stand, your standards, if there are items that a particular applicant has not met. You, you kind of have to give us a little more flavor, so that when we're now preparing the order for Ms. Berry, Signature, whomever, that we have sufficient documentation that if appealed, would not become a problem, so...
Yeah, and somebody else can read the apology letter.
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome, James.
Thank you guys for not fighting tonight and all getting along.
Again, what?
So, thanks for not fighting tonight and everybody getting along.
This is not the city commission.
But this is probably...
On that note, I'd be, don't get me into it.
No, but this is probably my last meeting, because I'm due in four weeks.
Yes, I will see you all January the 18th. Thank you for being here, have a safe...
January.
Yeah, I'm rushing it. Shit, June.
We're still on...
We're still on television. Give something, somebody to watch that's, that's more, it's...
Make a motion.
Wear a jern.